Bruce, you must have something really good, too.
Of course I do. It's Bruce Danielson, and I guess I'm here to entertain you, too.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our Tuesday, March 2, 2021 Sioux Falls City Council Meeting. Thanks for joining us tonight. We'll go ahead and get started by reading our roll, please. Tamara?
Councilmember Selberg.
Here.
Sale.
Here.
Starr.
Here.
Brecky.
Here.
Erickson.
Here.
Jensen.
Here.
Kylie.
Here.
Knightzert.
Here.
All right. We have Counselor Selberg and Sale are with us remotely tonight, and we'll welcome Tom Rooney here with us. Tom is with the Direct Line Prayer Center. He gives our invocation from time to time. Tom, thanks for being back with us. So I'd ask that you rise for Tom's invocation and then stay standing for our Pledge of Allegiance.
Let's pray. Father, we thank you that you are the author and the finisher of our faith, and we come to you today in Jesus' name, God, asking you for wisdom. Your word says that if we lack wisdom, all we have to do is to ask, and we'll receive. We knock on the door and it's open to us. So, Lord, we're asking and knocking today, and we pray that you would bless our city leaders, God, with your wisdom, knowledge, and understanding, that they may establish the ways of our city on a strong foundation. Thank you, Father, for your work among us, and, Lord, we just put our hope and our trust in you, that you will bless us, strengthen us. Help us, Lord, to put the disease behind us, God, that you would give us strength. We just trust you today in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Thank you, Tom, for being here tonight to give our invocation. We'll move on to our next item, item four, which is our consent agenda. Look for any changes or a motion on that.
Move to approve. Knightzert.
Second, Erickson.
All right. Motion by Knightzert, seconded by Erickson on that. Any discussion here, counsel? All right. Hearing none. We'll take a vote on that, please.
Councilmember Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Brecky.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
Kylie.
Yes.
Knightzert.
Yes.
All right. That passes eight to zero. On to item 25, then, which is our regular agenda. Look for a motion on that.
Move to approve, Erickson.
Second, Kylie.
Motion by Erickson, seconded by Kylie. Counselor Knightzert?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to amend by moving item 43 to immediately following item 34, item 44 to immediately follow item 38, and items 45 and 46 to immediately follow item 40.
Second, Erickson.
All right. Motion by Knightzert, seconded by Erickson to slide a few items around our agenda tonight. Any discussion on that motion? Counselor Knightzert, go ahead.
Just for the benefit of the public, most of it is just to bundle items that are related together.
Got it. Thank you. All right. Let's take a vote on that motion, please.
Motion to amend. Councilmember Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Brecky.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
Kylie.
Yes.
Knightzert.
Yes.
All right. That amendment passes eight to zero. We're back to the main motion as amended. Any other changes or amendments to bring forward? All right. Seeing none, let's vote on the motion as amended.
Councilmember Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr. Brecky.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
Kylie.
Yes.
Knightzert.
Yes.
All right. That passes eight to zero. Before we move on with our agenda, just want to review public input for the agenda items coming up. For regular agenda items, comments are limited to three minutes unless the item is being presented for final adoption, in which case, public input is limited to five minutes. For all regular agenda items, comments are limited to the agenda item under consideration at that time only. And during the general public input portion of the meeting, at the end, comments will be no more than three minutes per person. So we will move on to our next item, please.
Item 26 is transfer of 2021 retail wine and cider license and 2021 packaged liquor license from Luciano's North LTD, Luciano's North 720 South Highland Place to Cellar 54 LLC, Cellar 54, 720 South Highland Place, CUP not required. Item 27 is transfer of 2021 retail liquor license from RRK Wireless LLC, 512 North Main Avenue, to Roundhouse Brew Pub, South Dakota Incorporated, Roundhouse Brew Pub, 1515 East 69th Street, with conditional use permit CU 0133902020 being approved on December 2, 2020, pending change in use and building permit issuance and final inspections per building services. Item 28 is a new 2020-21 retail malt beverage, South Dakota Farm Wine License for Roundhouse Brew Pub, 1515 East 69th Street, pending change in use and building permit issuance and final inspections per building services. Item 29 is a new 2021 retail wine and cider license and new 2021 retail malt beverage, South Dakota Farm Wine License, requesting off-sale use only for Juve International Market LLC, 1512 East 10th Street, CUP not required. Item 30 is a new 2021 retail malt beverage, South Dakota Farm Wine License for Bauer Enterprises LLC, 4 Hills, 2800 East Marston Drive, with conditional use permit CU 0136212020 being approved on February 3, 2021, pending change in use and building permit issuance and final inspections per building services. Item 31 is a request to add video lottery terminals with the new 2020-21 retail malt beverage, South Dakota Farm Wine License for 4 Hills, 2800 East Marston Drive, pending change in use and building permit issuance and final inspections per building services. Item 32 is new 2021 retail wine and cider license for Bonus Round Bar, 127 West 10th Street. Item 33, special one-day liquor license for tea slot, JJ's Wine Spirits and Cigars to be operated at Sanford Event Barn, 2510 East 54th Street North for Summit League viewing parties on March 6, 7, 8, and 9, 2021.
Jamie, good evening.
Good evening. Jamie Palmer with Licensing, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have on items 26 through 33.
All right. Thanks, Jamie. Before we ask for questions from the councils, anyone from the public who would like to speak on any of these items here? All right, counsel, do you have any questions for Jamie on any of those items?
Move to approve, Erickson.
Second, Jensen.
All right. Motion by Erickson, seconded by Jensen. To approve. Any discussion here? All right. Hearing none. Let's take a vote, please.
Councilmember Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Brecky.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
Kylie.
Yes.
Knightzert.
Yes.
All right. That passes eight to zero. Next item.
Next item is item 34, a second reading, an ordinance of the City of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, establishing the tax increment revenues to be collected and authorizing the payment of tax increment revenues to Sioux Falls Development Foundation Incorporated in accordance with the Development Agreement for Tax Incremental District Number 23, City of Sioux Falls, private applicant, Sioux Falls Development Foundation.
Good evening, Dustin.
Good evening, counsel. Dustin Powers, Planning and Development Services. Tonight, in front of you, we have consideration of the project plan and development agreement for Tax Increment Finance District Number 23 to the City of Sioux Falls. The petitioner is the Sioux Falls Development Foundation, who is the city's nonprofit economic development partner. Tonight, they are represented here by Bob Muntz, Mike Gray, and Corey Buck, as well as their legal counsel, Todd Meyer Henry, with Meyer Henry Sargent. Also, on our legal counsel, we have Brendan Riley with Davenport Evans here. And then also represented here tonight from the Governor's Office of Economic Development is Joe Fiala. And then again, myself with Jeff Akoff from the Planning Department. There we go. Sorry for the technical difficulties.
Thanks.
With any TIF, the council's role is to consider the district boundaries, project plan, and the development agreements. If you recall from last September, we did bring those district boundaries forward that are shown on your screen, and the city council did recommend approval of those. The intention of creating the TIF district was to utilize the future positive tax increment from future projects within the district to establish development-ready sites in Foundation Park North. Since adopting the boundary, there's been a lot of momentum in Foundation Park, and that is what has led us here today to be able to present to you the project plan that we really went through in detail at the first reading on the February 16 City Council Meeting. So I will summarize some of those highlights here tonight. When we look at the TIF district that was created, there is nine parcels that currently generate $70,000 in property taxes based on the Amazon project currently under development, along with the other future developments that will cover the 460 acres remaining in the development of the TIF district. We are projecting that by the year 20 of the TIF district, $13.5 million will be collected in property taxes on an annual basis. So the difference between those new property taxes and the base value of that $70,000 is what's called the tax increment, and that's what will be utilized to pay for the TIF request and the improvements associated with the TIF. The Sioux Falls Development Foundation is requesting $94.3 million plus the cost of financing to be used for improvements within the TIF district. Those funds will again go to support the infrastructure and site prep, plating, sanitary sewer financing costs, as well as the Economic Development Competitiveness Fund. With any project plan, we're required by South Dakota codified law to have a number of items addressed. On the screen and on the next slide, you'll see all of those items that we address within the plan, as well as the sections in which they're addressed within the plan. So again, that calls out the improvements that will occur within the district, the economic feasibility study, which basically looks at will the tax increment generated pay for the TIF request, which we have established it will? The detailed list of estimated project costs, which we'll get into on the next few slides from now. A fiscal impact statement, so what is the impact to the taxing entities? The method of financing, so this will be a developer-funded TIF by the Sioux Falls Development Foundation. We also show in the project plan the existing conditions of the site, what are the future improvements? What are the land use changes that we could see out there? Some of this park is still zoned agricultural, so there will be some rezonings to rezone it to industrial use, which we'll see within this park. We'll also address whether or not it asks for any changes in the comprehensive plan. So this use that we're proposing as part of the industrial park is consistent with the comprehensive plan, and so there will not be any changes requested as part of that. When we look at the TIF eligible expenses, which is the main part of the project plan as well as the development agreement, you can see highlighted here, we have a detailed list on the right-hand side of the screen. But in summary, what that'll go to is, again, the infrastructure improvements and site preparation, which will repair 460 acres of shovel-ready industrial land. It'll go to the plating, sanitary cost recoveries, as well as engineering and financing costs, and then again, that Economic Development Competitiveness Fund. The TIF request, again, is capped at the $94.3 million request, along with the financing cost, which are also capped. So item 34 on the agenda is the development agreement lays out the commitments related to the TIF. This will again be a developer-funded TIF, and the Sioux Falls Development Foundation will be financially responsible for financing these improvements and paying back their financing. The city's obligation of the agreement is limited to the obligations payable solely from the tax increment revenue. So we're not using any other city resources or funds to pay for these improvements. It's only through the tax increment revenue collected, and that again is capped at that $94.3 million plus the financing cost. Certification of the expenses that occur within the district will be certified, or the expenses will be certified based on the terms of the development agreement. And then again, there will be coordination between the city on the Economic Development Competitiveness Fund and the Sioux Falls Development Foundation. So this was one of the items and one of the main items that we discussed at the last reading. Again, the Economic Development Competitiveness Fund is to support future identifiable costs located within the TIF district that are associated with the increased build-out of Foundation Park North. This sets aside $30 million for those uses. The potential uses are listed out within and labeled on how we would look at using these funds within the development agreement. Again, so those uses of the funds are to pay for future identifiable expenses as identified in the project plan, as well as site-specific items such as grading, infrastructure like roads, water, sewer, electric, gas connections, as well as rail connections and extensions, competitive land pricing, financial assistance, water pretreatment, wastewater pretreatment, and other costs associated with economic development projects that are locating within the Tax Increment Finance District. We all know that as we continue to grow as a city, we're no longer competing against peer cities of our size on economic development projects, but we are competing with larger cities such as Omaha, Des Moines, Kansas City. And this fund is meant to make us competitive when those companies are looking to locate in potentially Sioux Falls, South Dakota. So again, all of the expenses that we're talking about within the fund will be reviewed and approved by the city, as well as the Development Foundation, prior to those expenses being submitted. And with that, what I'm going to do is I'm going to bring up Bob Muntz, the president and CEO of the Sioux Falls Development Foundation. What he's going to do is answer some of those questions that kind of came up at the first reading and any other questions that you have. And then again, everyone I listed earlier is here tonight to answer any other questions that may come up.
All right. Thanks, Dustin. Good evening, Bob.
Councilmembers, Bob Muntz. I'm the president and CEO of the Sioux Falls Development Foundation. Couple of questions that came up a couple of weeks ago when we first talked about this. One was regarding financing, and because this is a phased development, we're going to be establishing a line of credit, which will provide us with a competitive industry determined by the market at that time that we take those financial draws. And unfortunately, even though we'd like it, we can't lock in a rate at any given time for expenses four and five years from now. So that's going to be as we move forward, we'll lock in those particular rates. But again, if interest rates are higher than 5%, if they're 6% or 7% in 2025 or whatever, the Development Foundation would take up the added expense of those interest expenses above 5%. So again, we lock that in, cap that at 5% in the TIF. The second piece of this was talking about oversight, and this exhibit that you see kind of shows the approval process and the reporting process for the Development Foundation. Typically, the staff will work with the committees to review and vet the ideas and the plans that we have. Those results are then recommended to the executive committee. They're vetted again there at the executive committee. And then ultimately, that idea and plan then goes through the process of getting presented to the full Board of Directors, who again looks at all the information processes, all the information that those committees went through, and then approves or recommends those decisions for revisions or whatever it needs to happen, and then eventually approves those particular decisions. So the Development Foundation is also responsible for reporting to a number of other agencies, the U.S. EDA, the South Dakota GOED, our banking consortium, the City of Sioux Falls. We are also audited. We do our own independent audit. We are also audited by the Forward Sioux Falls Program. We're audited by GOED. We're audited by a number of other entities as well. So we have a lot of people looking at our numbers and looking at the processes. So through the conversations that we've had over the past couple of weeks, I believe that, you know, we've agreed that a counselor can serve on our Board of Directors. As an ex officio member, we think that that's an appropriate way for us to stay connected to you and have them participate in our Board of Directors meetings. Our board is more than happy to have that, and we're excited to have someone from the council actually at our board meetings. We've had Erica. She's been a great addition. She will still be invited to come, so Erica will be there as well as a council member. So with that, we hope that we can kind of keep you in the loop, if you will, a little bit more than what we have been. And so those are some ways that I think we can help work with you and make sure that we are transparent and that you're seeing the expenses that we have and are able to help us control those. So with that, I would ask for any questions that you might have before you have your discussion and try to answer those.
All right. Thanks, Bob. We'll take public input and then call you back up if need be.
Thank you.
Anyone from the public here to speak on this topic tonight?
Greetings. I'm David Zalkitis, and my PowerPoint's coming. So I'm here to talk about the Foundation Park TIF. First, we should talk about what a TIF is and how it works. It's basically a way to subsidize development using property taxes, using future property taxes. And people borrow against them to fund development, to subsidize development. Legally, there's two requirements that you have to meet, one or the other, really. Either your district is blighted, meaning it's kind of slummy, or you need to stimulate the economy. Well, the second clause of stimulating the economy is really kind of pointless, because no matter what you're going to build, it's going to stimulate the economy. So I don't really see why that's even part of the law. I think that clause of the state law should be repealed, because it's not very useful. And one of the problems with TIFs is that, you know, if it's good for everybody, well, maybe everything should be a TIF. But then you have a problem with underfunded government. Might be a problem there. The traditional rationale of urban renewal doesn't really apply to this particular case, because there's no redevelopment going on. It's initial development, and we don't really have a depressed area here in Sioux Falls. We have the fourth lowest unemployment in the nation. Wow. Who is ever responsible for that? Congratulations. That's phenomenal. I hope you keep it up. The Foundation Park residents, as described on the Foundation Park website, they seem to be mostly low-end warehouse kind of work. All right. Seems to be where we got there. In terms of tax impacts, part of what's going to happen is that government expenses will increase because of all the new people coming into town, but our available funds will not simultaneously increase. That's kind of a mismatch. It could be problematic. Some of the TIF problems, I think that estimate of $94 million does not include interest, so that's going to add to the overall cost. And one of the problems with TIFs is that we allocate them to big businesses instead of small businesses, and as a consequence, we're going to have more wealth concentration in Sioux Falls and income inequality to go with it. I think, you know, TIFs are valuable, but they're kind of dangerous, and we should reserve them for depressed areas where they exist. Some of the beneficiaries of a TIF, builders, bankers, big business, got to be careful about those. I mean, they're great to have, but what we should subsidize instead is small innovative businesses, because that's where economic growth really happens. And high-tech, too, great things to subsidize. And as always, you know, you got to have something to smile about, and here's a beautiful landscape I took when I was in Utah with my kids. So good evening, everybody.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else here to speak on this topic tonight? All right, counsel. We'll move into any questions you might have for any of the folks here to speak to this item. Any questions? Counselor Knightzert, go ahead.
Just out of curiosity, is the ex officio member going to be a voting or non-voting member of the board?
Ex officio members are non-voting.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions tonight?
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Starr.
I think, I'd like to follow up on Counselor Knightzert's question from last week. I didn't get a, I hadn't got an answer anyway. Is that the funds that will be expended, are those public records, and will that be available to the public when those expenses are made?
So we've got a legal counsel here, too, so they can feel free to sit me down and answer his questions. So yes, the Sioux Falls Development Foundation is required to share documents that proves the expenses to the city, and upon the public's request to review those documents, the foundation would need to review the documents to determine if any portion of those is confidential or can't be as sensitive and exempt from that disclosure, but all of our records are open to you guys to review.
But are they open to the public to review?
They're open to.
I know I'm splitting words with you a little bit, but I want to make sure that I'm.
Counselor, Danny Brown, I can answer that question. From the city's perspective, the information from the foundation when they request a reimbursement, that's information that's open to a public request. And so the public can ask for copies of that information, just like they make general requests for other information. Now, generally speaking, most of that information is going to be open to the public if they make a request. With that said, there might be some things that are confidential, proprietary, or otherwise are exempt from disclosure. But generally speaking, the public will be able to make public records requests on that information.
So if I can follow up, Mr. Mayor, with the city attorney. So what would be an example of something that would be proprietary in this agreement? That would be that they would say, okay, we did a rail spur, or we kind of left it general on how the Economic Development Competitiveness Fund is. So what would you say that, an example of something that would be confidential or proprietary that couldn't be released?
Well, you know, I don't want to go into hypotheticals, but what I can tell you is, if the city deems something is proprietary, because the foundation has marked it that way, the city could make a denial on any public records request. That person making the request could appeal that decision. So we're not the end of the decision process. That person can appeal to an administrative law judge or the circuit court. As far as proprietary, I guess I could, you know, just spitballing. Very few things, I think, would be proprietary or confidential. Generally speaking, there are going to be requests for payments of infrastructure that is just general bid stuff that isn't proprietary. But for some reason, if they had a specific design that they only knew, and they came up with it with their architect, and then the construction crew came out and gave them some kind of benefited price because it was new technology, and in that process, they learned a new technique, and for some reason, that new technique was in the information provided to us when they were giving the request, we would scratch that or not make available that proprietary information or that technology. So general, how much does something cost, and how much, what does it pay for, what's the quantity? Those types of things aren't going to be exempt.
Thank you.
My attorney just whispered in my ear, it's security stuff, things that are secure to the company, basically that cannot be divulged. And so typically, we wouldn't have those, but there's always a chance that we could.
All right. Thanks, Bob. Other questions tonight? Counselor Erickson?
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation and all of those involved. This is a big deal for our community and really bringing a lot of jobs to there. I know there's been some critiques as far as if these are really the jobs we want for our community, but this is what Foundation Park is, and this is growing jobs and really putting Sioux Falls on the map again, in my opinion. And so I'm grateful that people want to come invest in Sioux Falls, South Dakota during a pandemic and during a time when a lot of places aren't able to grow or able to reinvest. And so I'm grateful for that as well. And I also just want to say thank you for hearing Counselor Sale and I out when we brought forward to you and Director Akoff saying, hey, can we be a part of this board? How does this look? Let's just brainstorm a little bit to see how we could be a part of it. And you really welcomed us and said, well, let's talk about it. What do we need to do? And had those conversations with your board members in making sure that. What I also like about that is when we as counselors are put on a board, it is that counselor's responsibility to come back and communicate with us. So for example, I'm on the municipal league board. When I go to the municipal league, I come and I tell you what I learned, what I did, what you can be involved in, and any of those things, just like COG, IRAB, Metro, all the things that we are appointed to. And that's what makes this council great, is that we can divide and conquer. We can work together. We can learn through the process. I know this is new, and it can be uncomfortable for some, but I think it's a great opportunity to continue Sioux Falls in the right direction and moving us forward. The number was given to me not too long ago that Sioux Falls collects about 24-ish percent, I don't want to misspeak, of the state sales tax revenue that is redistributed then and put in the general fund. And when Sioux Falls does well, our entire state does well. And I think oftentimes, some of the other cities forget that, because we are such a driver in the economic engine of Sioux Falls and South Dakota. And so it's a great opportunity for us to really give back to the rest of the state. And so it's a great opportunity for us to really give back to the rest of the state and really make sure that other communities continue to grow because people want to invest here. So, thank you again for hearing us out and for really the vision and for those that do want to invest in Sioux Falls when a time when a lot of people aren't.
Thank you, Counselor. I'm going to go to Counselor Selberg.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thanks to all of there for the presentation today. I am glad to hear that a council member will be attending the board meetings. I do appreciate that adjustment, and thanks to the counselors who raised the very valid concerns and requests that helped make that happen. That's a very good move. You know, the recent momentum out there at Foundation Park has just been so encouraging and exciting because there's been basically, for lack of a better term, kind of a lull out there for, you know, a few years back. So to see things really develop out there really is exciting. So kudos to those who are out there that have really made this happen. I'm just extremely optimistic that this investment's going to pay dividends for the citizens of Sioux Falls for generations to come. You know, we're competing with the big boys in the Midwest. And when it comes to that, we're trying to recruit major industry that takes significant investment. It takes significant vision to prevail in some of these contests, and you know, that's what this is all about. So, we talked about some of these numbers, 94 million, 30 million, it is daunting, but I do believe it's going to go in the right direction and pay us back many times over. So, thank you again, and I look forward to watching this develop.
All right, thank you, Counselor. Other questions tonight for any of our presenters on this item? Look for a motion here then?
Move to approve, Erickson.
Second, Kylie.
All right, motion by Erickson, seconded by Kylie. Discussion amongst the council on this item here. All right, hearing none. Let's take a vote, please.
Councilmember Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
No.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Knightzert?
Yes.
All right, that item passes seven to one. We'll move on to our next item, 43.
Item 43 is a resolution approving the project plan for tax incremental District Number 23, City of Sioux Falls. The Planning Commission recommends approval four to zero, private applicant Sioux Falls Development Foundation.
Dustin.
Good afternoon. Dustin Powers, Planning Department. This is associated with a development agreement that was just approved, so looking for your recommendation on that as well.
All right, thanks Dustin. Anyone from the public would like to speak on this item? All right, councilors, you have any questions for Dustin here?
Move to approve, Erickson.
Second, Jensen.
All right, motion by Erickson, seconded by Jensen to approve 43. Any discussion on the council here? All right, let's take a vote, please.
Councilmember Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
No.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Knightzert?
Yes.
All right, that passes seven to one. Move on to our next item, please.
Item 35 is a second reading. An ordinance of the City of Sioux Falls, South Dakota rezoning property located north of East 69th Street and east of South Sycamore Avenue from the AG Agricultural to the POPUD Pedestrian Oriented Planned Unit Development, RD1 Twin Home Duplex Residential Suburban and RS Single Family Residential Suburban Districts to the RD2 Town Home Residential Suburban District, RA3 Apartment Residential, High Density District, C2 Commercial Neighborhood and Streetcar District, and C4 Commercial Regional Districts Number 136452020, and amending the official zoning map of the City of Sioux Falls. The Planning Commission recommends approval four to zero, private applicants RONING Enterprises Incorporated, Chuck Point.
Good evening, Jason.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Jason Bieber, representing Planning and Development Services. This is an application by RONING Enterprises. It's located north of East 69th Street and east of South Sycamore Avenue. It's about 44.7 acres in size. The purpose of this rezoning is they're looking to construct a future residential office and commercial development.
All right, thank you, sir. Anyone from the public would like to speak on this one tonight? Counsel, do you have any questions for Jason on item 35 here? All right, look for a motion. Move approval, Knightzert.
Second, Jensen.
All right, motion by Knightzert, seconded by Jensen to approve this item. Any discussion here, council? All right, hearing none. Let's take a vote, please.
Councilmember Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Knightzert?
Yes.
All right, that item passes seven to zero. Move on to our next item, 36.
Item 36 is a second reading. An ordinance of the City of Sioux Falls, South Dakota rezoning property located north of West 49th Street and east of South Grange Avenue from the I-1 Light Industrial District to the RA3 Apartment Residential High Density District Number 136472020, and amending the official zoning map of the City of Sioux Falls. The Planning Commission recommends approval four to zero, private applicants REM Construction Services, Paul Reynolds.
The applicant is Paul Reynolds. The owner is MBLB LLC. It's located north of West 49th Street and east of South Grange Avenue, just southeast of Costco. It's about 7.3 acres in size. The purpose of this rezoning is the applicant is looking at constructing a four-story apartment complex on the north half of this parcel.
All right, thank you, Jason. Anyone from the public here to speak on this one tonight? Counsel, do you have any questions for Jason here? All right, entertain a motion on this.
Move approval.
Second.
All right, move approval by, I believe, was that Selberg?
Correct.
All right, motion by Selberg to approve, seconded by Counselor Erickson. Any discussion on that, council? All right, hearing none. Let's vote on that, please.
Councilmember Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr? Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Knightzert?
Yes.
That passes seven to zero. Next item, please.
Next item is 37, is a second reading. An ordinance of the City of Sioux Falls, South Dakota rezoning property located at 702 South Duluth Avenue from the RT1 Single Family Residential Traditional District to the RT2 Town Home Residential Traditional District Number 136552021, and amending the official zoning map of the City of Sioux Falls. The Planning Commission recommends approval four to zero, private applicants Aaron George Properties, Aaron George.
The applicant and owner here is Aaron George. It's located at 702 South Duluth Avenue. It's about .15 acres in size. The purpose of this rezoning is to correct the zoning for the current use of the property. As you can see, it's been a three-unit converted house for some time.
All right, thanks, Jason. Anyone from the public here to speak on this one tonight? All right, council, any questions for Jason here?
Move to approve, Erickson.
Second, Jensen.
Motion by Erickson, seconded by Jensen to approve 37. We've got any discussion on this one? All right, hearing none. Let's take a vote, please.
Councilmember Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr? Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Knightzert?
Yes.
That item passes seven to zero. On to 38, please.
Item 38 is a second reading. An ordinance of the City of Sioux Falls, South Dakota rezoning property located south of West Maple Street and west of North Marion Road from the AG Agricultural District to the CN Conservation RS Single Family Residential Suburban, RD2 Town Home Residential Suburban, LW Live Work RA3 Apartment Residential High Density and C2 Commercial Neighborhood and Streetcar Districts Number 136572021, and amending the official zoning map of the City of Sioux Falls. The Planning Commission recommends approval four to zero, private applicants Norman Engineering Incorporated, Aaron Norman.
The applicant here is Aaron Norman. The owner is Seshar Family Trust. It's located at the southwest corner of West Maple Street and North Marion Road, just west of the new Jefferson High School. It's about 152 acres in size. The purpose of this rezoning is they're looking at constructing a future residential office and commercial development.
Thanks, Jason. Anyone from the public who would like to speak on item 38 here? All right, council, do you have any questions for Jason on this item?
Move to approve, Erickson.
Second, Kylie.
Motion by Erickson, seconded by Kylie to approve 38. Any discussion on the council here? All right, hearing none. Let's take a vote on it, please.
Councilmember Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Knightzert?
Yes.
All right, that one passes eight to zero. Item 44.
Item 44 is a resolution of the City of Sioux Falls approving the preliminary plan of Jefferson Heights Edition 136582021. The Planning Commission recommends approval four to zero, private applicants Norman Engineering Incorporated, Aaron Norman.
This is the preliminary subdivision plan that goes along with the rezoning that was just approved. Just west of the new Jefferson High School, it's 152 acres, and they're looking to construct future residential office and commercial development.
Thanks, Jason. Anyone from the public would like to speak on item 44 here? All right, council, any questions for Jason tonight?
I do.
Go ahead, Counselor Erickson.
Any of these homes, will they be required to have flood insurance?
Looks like most of it, they're trying to keep out of the special flood hazard areas. You can see kind of those grayish ones. Those are all going to be zoned CN. So typically, when they're going to come back in here, they're not going to plat any lots with that in there and have that burden on those homeowners.
Okay, so would that also, if I can have a follow-up, I'm sorry. Would that also take into account the new proposed maps coming up that we've been hearing about from, we've had presentations from Albert and so on and so forth? Will that take this into account, or is that, I mean, I know we haven't approved those yet, but I'm just wondering how it changes here and if it impacts this land that they won't, they may or may not be able to build as many, or they may have to bring in two-foot to three-foot?
Great, great question. As you know, Albert's pretty passionate about the special flood hazard area and our floodplain ordinance. He's also one of our current planners, obviously, so this is actually his case. So he's been communicating with Norman Engineering, and I'm assuming he's passed along all of those proposed or if it could affect it in the future, so.
Right, because there are some major changes and things that could impact. How many homes would be allowed if, and also the cost of how many homes you could build if we have to go from that two-board to three-board, and I know I'm speaking and probably tongue to most people because of these things we've learned about with FEMA, but I just was curious how that would impact this. But it sounds as if they're communicating with Norman, so we'll see how it shakes out. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Counselor. Any other questions? Counselor Knight, go ahead.
And I do see Aaron Norman here in the corner if we needed him. But, so the blue area floodplain boundary, I take it that's the special flood hazard area, as in 100-year?
The light blue would be the 100-year special flood hazard area. The greenish with the lines through it, that's the floodway.
Yeah, yep, yep, the floodway. But there's also on the table this potential 100-foot buffer area in addition to, I can't remember what the term was, and I just would be curious if a lot of these lots would fall into that and would run into restrictions and if the engineer is planning for that or aware of that.
I think, as you indicated, Aaron's here, he might be the best to answer that if that would be a question for him.
Yeah, maybe he could just speak to what his planning is.
Good evening, Aaron.
Hey, good evening, council. Aaron Norman, 3800 West 53rd Street. Yeah, in regards to floodplain, yeah, we're aware. We've been communicating with Albert about the new ordinance that's coming up. Obviously, there's some, you know, the 100-foot buffer yard, but there's some elevation differences between what's in play now and what will be proposed in the future. So we are working at, we may have to make some tweaks to the alignments of the roads inside there, maybe scoot them out, but we're working through that. Also, we're working through, you know, we got a wetland specialist involved too, so we're working through some of the wetlands on site and what our options are there too. So we definitely take that into play. Obviously, when we get done, we want to be able to market and sell these lots and not have implications for property owners down the road, so we'll take that into account.
Okay, thank you. All right, any other questions for Aaron while we got him here?
I'll just make one more statement that, you know, obviously, those have not passed, and so we understand that they may not pass, or there may be changes or compromises that are made along that way just as conversations have been going on, if those adjustments will be made or not. And so obviously, you'll be communicating to those homeowners to know where their risk is and what could potentially come of it. So it's just been at the forefront lately, and this is a prime example of what we were discussing in a meeting a couple of weeks ago is how this impacts housing and our housing fund, and how this impacts lot prices as well as building. Because if you all of a sudden have to trim out a few houses, you're going to charge more for those other ones. So it's just something we want to be aware of. So, thank you for your bringing this forward, and it's a gray area with the new high school going in, and so it'll be, it'll be a great, incredible development as that west side continues to grow. So I'll make a motion to approve.
Second, Knightzert.
All right, motion by Counselor Erickson, it's seconded by Knightzert to approve, excuse me, item 44. Any discussion on this item, council? All right, hearing none. We'll take a vote on this one, please.
Councilmember Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Knightzert?
Yes.
All right, that passes eight to zero. We'll move to item 39, please.
Item 39 is a second reading. An ordinance of the City of Sioux Falls, South Dakota rezoning property located at 209 South Spring Avenue from the C2 Commercial Neighborhood and Streetcar District to the RT2 Town Home Residential Traditional District Number 136712021, and amending the official zoning map of the City of Sioux Falls. The Planning Commission recommends approval four to zero, private applicants The Gathering Place LLC, Cindy Tripp.
The applicant and owner here is Cindy Tripp. It's located at 209 South Spring Avenue. It's about .15 acres in size. The purpose of this rezoning is the applicant had taken this from a residential property to a commercial property called The Gathering Place, which hosted some smaller events, bridal showers and things like that. Now the applicant is ready to retire from that, and so she's looking at changing it back into that single, into a residential home with somebody ready to purchase it, so.
Thank you, Jason. Anyone from the public here to speak on this item? Counsel, any questions here? Look for a motion.
Move approval, Jensen.
Second, Brecky.
All right, motion by Jensen, seconded by Brecky on this item. Any discussion here, council? All right, let's take a vote, please.
Councilmember Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Knightzert?
Yes.
That passes eight to zero. On to item 40.
Item 40 is a first reading. An ordinance of the City of Sioux Falls, South Dakota correcting the legal description of ordinance number 821. Recommendation set a date a second reading for Tuesday, March 9, 2021.
You hit play right in the bottom right. There you go, right next to it, right there. There you go. There you go. Good evening.
Travis Larson, representing Engineering tonight. To speak on item 40, correction ordinance associated with renaming, or street renaming ordinance 8-21 approved January 12, 2021. Legal description error was discovered by the Minnehaha County Register of Deeds, and because of this, a correction ordinance is necessary to ensure the ordinance is indexed properly, and Engineering requests your support and approval.
All right, thank you, Travis. Anyone from the public who would like to speak on this item? All right, councilors, any questions for Travis tonight? All right, look for a motion, a set of dates, a second reading for next week, Tuesday, March 9.
Move to approve, Brecky.
Second, Jensen.
All right, motion by Brecky, seconded by Jensen on that. Any discussion here? All right, let's take a vote on that one, please.
Councilmember Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Knightzert?
Yes.
All right, that one passes eight to zero. Next item.
Item 45 is a resolution repealing Resolution Number 7720 and the vacation of a 251-foot section of South Stokes Avenue and all of East Stokes Circle in Split Rock Township, Minnehaha County, South Dakota.
Again, so items 45 and 46 actually go together. Item 45 is a resolution to repeal, a resolution that was approved July 7, 2020, which is 77-20. Basically, what happened, the Minnehaha County Register of Deeds rejected the original Split Rock Township right-of-way vacation due to an error, and so subsequently, our Resolution 77- resolution seventy-seven dash twenty was also rejected, so we are requesting your support and approval on that as well.
Got it, all right, thanks, Travis. Anyone from the public who would like to speak on this one? Counselors, you got any questions here? Look for a motion to approve this item.
Move to approve, Brecky.
Second.
All right, motion by Brecky, seconded by Jensen on this. Any discussion here, counsel? All right, hearing none, let's take a vote, please.
Counselor member Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Neitzler?
Yes.
All right, that passes eight to zero. Item forty-six.
Item forty-six is a resolution approving the vacation of all of East Stokes Circle in Split Rock Township, Minnehaha County, South Dakota.
Go ahead, Travis.
So item forty-six is the new resolution vacating Stokes Circle, which is located near East Arrowhead Parkway and Six Mile Road on the east side of Sioux Falls. It is not within the city of Sioux Falls, but is in our extraterritorial area. Split Rock Township Vacation Resolution twenty dash oh four was approved on October thirteenth of two thousand and twenty, and South Dakota codified law thirty-one dash three dash forty-four requires the municipality to act on the vacation as well. With that, we are requesting your support and approval.
All right, thanks, Travis. Anyone from the public who would like to speak on this one? Counsel, any questions here? Look for a motion on it.
Move to approve, Brecky. Second.
All right, motion by Brecky, seconded by Erickson. Any discussion tonight on this, counsel? All right, hearing none, we'll take a vote, please.
Counselor member Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Neitzler?
Yes.
That passes eight to zero. Next item, please.
Item forty-one is a first reading, an emergency ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, to require face coverings in an indoor public place where six-foot social distancing cannot be achieved. Recommendation set a date a second reading for Tuesday, March ninth, two thousand and twenty-one.
Counselor Kylie, the floor is yours on this.
Thank you very much. Counselor Sale and I are bringing forward basically the same least restrictive ordinance that has been established previously. No change in, changes with one key exception, and that exception is, once the South Dakota Department of Health announces moving to priority group one E in the vaccination process, the mandate will end, it will sunset, and the South Dakota Department of Health website currently estimates that that would take place in mid-April, and I believe that was probably established prior to the release of this third vaccine, so it's possible that that could change. This proposal is a result of a collaborative effort involving Avera and Sanford Health Systems, the city of Sioux Falls Health Department, and the mayor's office. We discussed such things as current COVID cases, variants, and their impacts on cases, the progress taking place concerning vaccinations, and other aspects associated with this issue. Ultimately, we developed a proposal before us this evening. This proposal basically does two things. Number one, it recognizes that thankfully, the COVID environment has improved since we last visited this issue, which is the reason for including the one E sunset. And number two, it extends the mask mandate requirement long enough to allow the most vulnerable in our community to get their vaccinations, or at least to get their first vaccination. We feel this is a good approach, we feel that this is a caring approach. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you, Counselor Kylie. All right, anyone from the public who would like to speak on this item tonight, please come on up? Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Dear City Council, thank you very much for your service. I am here tonight to express my concerns about the extension of the Sioux Falls mask mandate.
Can you just state your name real quick, sir?
My name is Merlin Huff.
Okay, thanks.
District fourteen.
Thanks.
I believe these mandates do more harm than good at this point. I believe we need to trust the science and look at the data, which do not recommend mask mandates. To be fair, looking narrowly at Sioux Falls coronavirus numbers in isolation, it is not clear whether the mask mandate helped or arrived immediately after Sioux Falls cases peaked. A wider perspective, which considers other cities, counties, states, and countries, however, does not make a compelling case for masks having been effective. Everywhere else that a mask mandate has been imposed, there has been no appreciable difference. In a highly touted Kansas University study, which claimed a six percent difference under a mask mandate, a crucial data point was left out. If that point had been included, the results would have demonstrated that masked counties did worse than unmasked counties. A CDC meta-study in May of two thousand and twenty concluded that masks in non-medical settings did not demonstrate an ability to stop the spread of influenza, another respiratory regional seasonal virus. Here in Sioux Falls, very few people are complying with the mask mandate. Among the people that I talked to, most are frustrated by it and comply out of a sense of Midwest nice, more than a sense that they are actually doing any good. This is an imposition on your citizens and one that they are quietly disobeying. You might be wondering, well, then, what difference does it make? If nobody's complying and the mask mandate has no penalty, what's the harm in extending it? Masks are ineffective when worn improperly, and even when worn correctly, they still pose a risk of contact infection as a result of wearers touching surfaces, adjusting their masks like I just did, and touching their eyes and face. As the parent of an eighteen-month-old, I am also concerned about the world in which he is developing. We are social creatures that learn to socialize, speak, and self-regulate by watching the facial expressions of others. Masks are an obstacle to my son's ability to read faces out in public, inhibiting his progress during a crucial development period. How many other young citizens or adults with disabilities are experiencing this hurdle? The trend in our state and neighboring states is clear, we've passed the peak. Since the initial fear and panic about the coronavirus, the conditions on the ground have changed. While it initially may have been desirable to take emergency action and protect people when so much was unknown, circumstances have changed. We know more, we have more hospital availability. Many people either have recovery-based immunity or are now immunized. I don't have time to address it tonight because I only have forty-seven seconds left, but I know that herd immunity has started to kick in. We never originally intended to stop the spread, that would be a fool's errand. Emergency powers were used to make sure hospital beds were available to those who needed them. Today, hospital usage due to COVID nineteen in South Dakota is as low as it was back in May of last year, eighty-nine beds. In other words, mission accomplished. We are through the high demand on our hospital systems. ICU beds and hospital beds and ventilators are available to those who need them. It is time for us to get back to work, to open our businesses and take off the masks, let our children see faces again, let us retire the use of emergency powers, and show that we are as capable of giving back power as we say we are. Let us take bold action, let us take a stand for individual liberty, let us trust the science, let this mandate expire. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, Merlin. You're the fastest reader I've ever had at city council, so well, well done. Anyone else here to speak on this item tonight, please come on up? Come on up, sir. Good evening.
Good evening, mayor and counselors. My name is Adam Schulten, West Ninth Street. I worked in a clean environment, sanitary environment, nuclear pharmacy, I was responsible for the cleaning, my own environment, the entire environment, at the degree in physics, and I just wanted to bring up a point, although my sentiment, I largely agree with the gentleman who spoke before, and I don't wear a mask except for when I come into places like this where I have to. But there was recently a change made in the CDC guidelines on the, on the threshold of the virus particle in the testing, the screening for, for a positive test, and this was a change that was made, a concern was made early on about the test level was too low, they were catching too many particles, even they would, scientists would say there was virus, cold virus particles that would be caught and then causing positive tests. Now, information, I'm sorry I don't have sources on this, but it was a, it was a reliable source, it was what you call the mainstream source, mainstream media sources, not a blogosphere. So the change was made to raise that threshold, just a couple of months after the Biden administration took office. So now what it's going to look like is there's going to be less tests, less positive tests coming through, significantly less, and so I'm afraid that we might get lulled into thinking there's less cases, and therefore change our approach to fighting the virus. I just wanted to make sure that you knew about that, so.
And any questions? Thank you, Adam.
You're welcome.
All right. Come on up, ma'am.
I'm Paula Hanson from Sioux Falls. I actually handed out a research, and I do just want to say that, like, we are not coming here with false news, like, this is what we read, like, these are studies, this is from doctors from other countries, like, we're, we're not conspiracy theorists, these things do not help. So I wanted to bring up, because my kid had issues at school with the mask, so I'm going to bring it up again, minus the harassment that we are still receiving, even while being able to maintain a six-foot distance, nobody cares, the businesses don't care, I'm getting harassed by other customers in stores. I was with my five-year-old daughter at a store the other day, some lady, we were six feet apart, it was fine, we were checking out, some lady came up to me and said, you need to wear a mask, you can't be in here, with, well within six feet. So while I maintain a six-foot distance, trying to do my part to keep people feeling better, she was well within my bubble and called me and my five-year-old an a-hole, a five-year-old child. This divide is getting bigger and bigger and bigger, and if we don't stop it, it's never going to end. I don't think anybody here cares if other people want to wear masks. I don't care if people want to wear shoes, I don't care if people want to wear purple, but to tell somebody that you have to wear a mask to go into a store, to go to school, and if you don't, you get ridiculed. I worry for my five-year-old, like, that's not what I want my five-year-old to see, that's just not it. But I did hand out a study, because my five-year-old started getting headaches, she was super, super, and like, five-year-olds are grumpy, but she was super, super grumpy. We were up for hours, she was throwing fits, she was crying, that was while she was wearing a mask at school because she had to wear a mask to sit by her friends. This study actually shows, this is hurting these kids, this is a study done on actual kids, like, this is hurting the kids. So again, I don't want to come in here and say, if you wear a mask, you're wrong, if you don't wear a mask, you're wrong, I don't care, I don't care what anybody wants to do with their bodies, because that's their choice, but to give people the power to harass and ridicule because you don't or can't wear a mask is ridiculous. So I, and our numbers are down, I don't know if anybody has seen that, our numbers are very, very low compared to when we first started this, so to extend this, I think is just creating a bigger hole, so, thank you.
Thanks, Paula. Come on up, ma'am. Good evening.
Good evening. Amy Willis, residing in Sioux Falls, Chair of AMAS, The Truth of Su Lam. We have already spoken to you about the infectiveness of masks and the health hazards of it. It was already presented to you that we do not have an emergency. This fake emergency is illegal according to the law. I will repeat that, this fake emergency is illegal. Furthermore, the testing is said to be eighty percent false positives. Yet in spite of all these facts, the mask ordinance passed, and now you are considering extending it. We, the people who understand the issues, have repeatedly told you that we do not want this mask ordinance. Yet, the health concern is not the main issue. Our focus and concern needs to be is requiring other people to wear a mask a violation of civil rights and our constitution. On December fourteenth, two thousand and twenty, Counselor Member Janet Brecky admitted that indeed forcing another person to wear a mask is a violation of our constitutional rights. This overreach of our city council is a grave error and must be remedied. I have also presented to you that emergency is not a viable reason to take away any constitutional rights. This was confirmed by the Supreme Court of the United States in regards to the Bradley Bill. In fact, it is for this very purpose that our constitution exists, it is to protect our freedoms and our rights during a crisis like now. Therefore, solemnly state that every one of you council members who have voted for the mask ordinance have violated your oath of office. I quote Abraham Lincoln, "Those who deny freedom to others deserve it not for themselves." Thank you.
Thank you. Come on up, ma'am, good evening.
Good evening. My name is Megan Cheddar, I'm a business owner in Sioux Falls. South Dakota Constitution, Article eleven, Section one, inherent rights. All men are born equally free and independent and have certain inherent rights, among which are those of enjoying and defending life and liberty, of acquiring and protecting property, and the pursuit of happiness. To secure these rights, governments are instituted among men, deriving their just powers from the consent of the governed. As a hairstylist, I gladly wear a mask if it makes my client more comfortable. That, however, is my choice to make and not that of elected officials. For the last year, we have seen the mainstream media lie about South Dakota's COVID numbers, and we have watched the top scientists flip-flop on what works. It is high time that we put a stop to the nonsense. We have a vaccine now, and even though we have a vaccine, they continue running with the lie that you'd better wear a mask, better yet, how about two masks? When in history have we ever been scared of spreading a virus after having the vaccine? Once I had the polio vaccine or hepatitis vaccines, nobody told me to wear a mask to protect others, it's only common sense. Wearing a mask to prevent coronavirus has never been peer-reviewed or clinically trialed, so why are we all running around wearing a mask with no proof it works, no peer review, no clinical trial? Actually, we have seen studies that prove the opposite. A friend of mine had COVID and went to the doctor. When the nurses initially came in the room, they had disposable masks, like some of you. After her test came back positive, they quickly changed and came in the room with N-ninety-five masks on. Even they know that those paper masks or cloth masks won't protect you from a virus. For months now, we've watched other states push statewide mandate, masks, mask mandates, and their Corona numbers have soared regardless. I see more and more people every day who are fed up and refusing to wear the masks. Many are just wearing them so they are not harassed or caught in an altercation, some are now wearing transparent masks, some are just wearing it under their nose or chin, and many aren't wearing them at all. These are all signs that it is time to stop the unconstitutional mask mandates and let the people make their own decisions. A couple of months ago, my stepdad, who was, who had just recovered from a serious case of COVID pneumonia, was released from quarantine. I suspect, he was in a store without a mask. I suspect he wasn't wearing a mask because he wasn't up for the struggle to breathe through his mask after just getting over being sick, or maybe it was because the doctor had cleared him from immunity for COVID for a few months. Nonetheless, he was followed, harassed, and called horrific names by a fellow patron throughout the entire store. This is what your unproven, unforcible mask mandate is doing to our community, it is dividing the people and making tyrants feel empowered to enforce it. You're good if you wear a mask and evil and hateful if you don't. Each and every one of you were put on this council to represent the people, not control them or be dictators. Thank you to those of you who have already recognized that. If the city believes it is safe to open the pools, it needs to do away with this mandate. In light of that, it's time to stop the unconstitutional overreach, it's time to allow business owners the freedom they deserve, and it's time to stop allowing this to further divide the people.
Thanks, Megan.
Please end this mask mandate, thank you.
Come on up. Applause is not needed, thank you. Go ahead, sir.
My name is TJ Lutz, I moved here with my family this past October. We chose to move here not because South Dakota is conservative or a red state, there are quite a few of those around the country, but we came to South Dakota because we got the sense that the people here weren't just conservative, but loved freedom. They valued the same principles we hold dear to our hearts and would give our lives to protect. I guess the jury is still out on whether or not South Dakotans genuinely love freedom, but this much has become readily apparent. The members of this council do not, despite what they'll surely tell you. It took a little while to whittle down what I wanted to say here tonight. First, there's one important point that I want to make crystal clear. This isn't about the efficacy of masks. There is conflicting information on their effectiveness, unique considerations for every person, and nuanced risk tolerances for each individual. Frankly, I don't care to waste my breath on the topic and think the whole debate is a distraction from the real issue. This virus has brought death and suffering. real issue. This virus has brought death and suffering, as all viruses do, but that damage pales in comparison to the damage wrought by rampant government overreach, deception, and self-centered virtue signaling. And while this virus and its effects fade, we have only just begun to reap the consequences of the oppressive authoritarianism, which is a wolf in sheep's clothing, claiming to be in our best interests. Within Sioux Falls, there is one example that is most troubling and enraging to me. Children and parents have come before this council to recount numerous instances of degrading, subversive actions towards them by other citizens of Sioux Falls for choosing not to wear a mask. These stories are heartbreaking and paint a clear picture of the cultural divide that is emerging in this city. A cultural divide this council is well aware of, a cultural divide encouraged by this mandate and propagated by the city council. Quite simply, this cabal of self-righteousness has chosen their own need to feel needed over the rights and well-being of their constituents. Sioux Falls City Council, do not extend this mask mandate. This mandate stokes the flames of division, infringes on our natural rights, and elevates the perception of safety over the principles this nation was founded on. Everyone here tonight has a choice. Sioux Falls City Council, your choice is clear. You will either bend the knee to sinister cultural pressures and emotionally charged decision-making.
Thanks, TJ. Appreciate it, ma'am. Anyone else here to speak tonight on this topic? Please come on forward, ma'am.
I've never done this before. My name's Katie DeShepper.
Welcome.
Thank you. I'd like to thank you for letting me speak.
Sure.
And I think that there is a lot of anger in the world today, and it's very sad because really, we are all blessed by God to be here, and He wants us to care about each other and not point fingers or blame each other, especially when it comes to like a virus. It's not anybody's fault, especially not our children. So I've been kind of affected by that because I work with children, and it matters that they see me smile, and it helps them to know I care about them, and it helps them to learn. And there's so much nonverbal communication that we relay with our faces. I've been struck how when I'm over the last, whenever this whole thing started with these masks, that it's almost like I'm walking around in a graveyard everywhere I go. I don't see anybody almost. And I just, so I just kind of wanted to maybe say that, so maybe you could consider that when you are making your decision. I hope that you decide to stop it. And then I, because I'm not quite sure there's authority to do it, because this is where we breathe. That's the other thing. Some people don't like, you know, covering where they breathe. It's I'm not, but anyhow, that's kind of off the subject. I really just kind of wanted to say that about the children. And so, thank you, and I will pray for you that, for wisdom to make the right decision, whatever that might be, and that we can all maybe come together as a community more. And, but I think we've done a pretty good job. I mean, thank God, most of our businesses are still open, as far as I'm aware. So anyhow, thank you.
Thanks, Katie. Anyone else here to speak tonight? Come on up.
Tim Stanga. I think the public that's watching this tonight and the people that are here realize that they're wasting their time because this has already been voted on. This is a yes vote. It will go on till whenever you guys want to bring it on because you guys are going to be played fools. Once this virus has really found out what it really is and who is behind this virus, the CDC is not going to tell you the truth. And Dr. Fauci, I think he's in it so far that he's making millions. We have our TV stations, our newspaper. That's something that they should be digging into on what the CDC says, what Fauci says, what Biden says. Maybe what they should do is, maybe they should do their homework. Maybe they should put out the truth instead of lying for different people. This is not, this is not Republican or Democrat. What you're doing is you're destroying people. But I can also say one thing. When I go out during the day and I go out at night, nine times out of 10, nobody's wearing a mask. So you guys are wasting your time. People are getting tired of this city council. People are getting tired of dealing with face masks. You know, they state that every, every time you wear your face mask, you got to wash it. If it's a paper face mask, you got to throw it in the garbage. How many times you think a person throws their paper face mask in the garbage, or they get it in their car, throw it on their seat, and if they got to go into a store and wear a face mask, they throw that same face mask on, and they use it for two, three weeks at a time. I bet you that's pretty good, isn't it, when you're around people? It's just amazing on how you guys think. I know there's a couple of people on the city council that really do realize what face masks are for. They're for doctors when they're doing surgeries, for nurses, not for going on the public. Because really and truthfully, you guys came out and said that we're going to watch the numbers. If the numbers are going down, then we're going to, we're going to let off on the face masks. But now, oh, gosh, now we got to look at something else. Now we got to look at what the state's going to do. It wasn't what the state was going to do when we voted on this. It was the numbers. Stop lying to the people. Stop playing games with the people and start telling the truth.
Thank you. Good evening, sir. Come on up.
Hello. Hi. My name is Dylan Schumacher. I find it funny that this is still listed as an emergency order. An emergency, I looked it up, is a serious, unexpected, and often dangerous situation requiring immediate action. If there ever was an emergency, by now, it's obviously long since passed. You know, at first, when we passed this fiat, it was, hey, just till the end of the year. About two or three weeks later, we extended it till March, and here we are now extending it until, well, we're not really sure. This despite the fact that, you know, again, as others have stated, there's really no demonstration that masks are actually effective. But, but the truth is, this isn't about logic, or reason, or facts, or data, or proof, or any of that. This entire useless order centers around something much more basic. It centers around fear. For, it's either, we've been awash in for a year now in fear propaganda, and it's either fear of the disease, or what other people think, or we just got to do something, which is ever the road paved to hell with those good intentions. It's always driven by fear. And we have a word in our language for people who are ruled by fear, a person who lacks the courage to do or endure dangerous or unpleasant things. That word is coward. Now, I'd imagine this council's very familiar with that word, as they seem to have confused it with a virtue as of late. All men feel fear. That's universal. What is not universal, what is not appropriate, is to allow fear to rule your life, dictate your actions, and drive public policy. This body of cravens needs to take a hard look in the mirror. We sit here tonight, all showered and cleaned and dressed nicely, and we talk in nice, quiet, respectful tones, trading away our liberties when there are others who are covered in dirt, their clothes in tatters, not having slept for days, screaming their lungs out trying to secure those, and we're just gracelessly casting them aside. Take your mask off, look at your face in the mirror, and ask yourself why you're so cheaply and easily trading away these riches that others valued so highly that they gave their sweat, their blood, and their lives for.
Anyone else to speak tonight? Come on up. Good evening, sir.
Dennis Haugen, Sioux Falls. My understanding is that this ordinance has no penalty. So it just seems to me that you are just showing some concern because anything you do, as to its effectiveness, is going to be a risk. There is no positive answer. So just, to me, it's encouragement. But what I'd like to point out is I've been hearing quite regularly. See, there's two sides to this thing. You have to, you had to try to balance between protecting yourself against the disease and destroying the economy and people's lives. Now, what I hear awfully lot is there's two states, South Dakota and Florida, that somehow managed to get through this without destroying the economy and destroying a whole bunch of lives. I hear that over and over. When you compare it to California, you compare it to, so all I can say is, it seems that you've done well. And the ordinance doesn't have a penalty. It just means you're trying to show a concern, knowing that there's a risk, no matter what you do. You see? So I don't want this to get too negative in here because South Dakota and Sioux Falls have done very well at the top.
All right. Thank you, Dennis. Come on forward, ma'am.
Good evening. Good evening. I'm Beth Leichtenberger. I'm a business owner, CPA here in Sioux Falls, South Dakota. I'm a mom and a grandma as well, and I really am here on behalf of not just myself, but the hundreds and hundreds of clients that I represent. I told a number of them that, that I would come here, and they were grateful. So I want to first of all thank you, all of you counselors and mayor for your service to Sioux Falls, South Dakota. There is, I became very abundant during COVID that this was one of the most blessed places to be during a pandemic. That being said, though, as I look at your agenda to extend a mask mandate, and while I can say that as a business owner and a boss, I can appreciate pressure and how that feels when you're feeling pressure from your community to do something, do something, do something, or to fix something. I just thought I would give you just a real-life snapshot of what I am seeing. I meet with many, many of my clients in person every single week, and I give each of them the option when they enter my office, that if they would be comfortable, they can remove their masks. About 97% of them not just remove the mask once the door is closed and the blinds are shut, but they go on to then verbally explain to me with great emotion that they are frustrated, they are tired, they are tired of the mandate, they are complying only because they are being berated in public. I have been told to that as well. If I don't wear a mask, I am killing people. So the mandate has further divided us. So I just, I want to encourage you to be courageous and, and to do what I believe is the right thing here, which is to not extend the mandate. I think we can take a look at Florida. I just returned from Florida. There wasn't a mask in sight, and there were overage 65s everywhere, not in restaurants, not in retail stores. And it makes a difference when we take our mask off and we can see each other's face and our emotions. You know this. I know this. It makes a difference. So I thank you for your service, and I continue to pray for you and your leadership to this city, and I am trusting you will make the right decision, and you will stop the mandate. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Come on up, ma'am.
Hi. My name is Kathy Sullivan, and I started moving back into Sioux Falls a little over two years ago. I'm an airline pilot for a major airline, going on 36 years, travel overseas all weekly. And I just wanted to say to you guys, I was so thrilled to see Tom Rooney here. Thank you for that. You wouldn't believe other parts of the country don't have, don't even, can't even compare to South Dakota. I'm so proud to call this state my home. I grew up here, graduated from here, and, and I just wanted to say, I travel, like I said, I travel all over. It used to be a time when, when I saw masks in the terminals, I'd go to the other side because I didn't know if they had tuberculosis or they had something. That was kind of the ongoing thing. You just figured they have, they're sick with something. Overseas, you'll see masks you do, but a lot of it's for smog, pollution, things like that, you know? And they make it sound commonplace, and it was, it is and was over there, but it's for a reason, and it's not this reason. Maybe now it might be different, but you guys are the, I'm not used, it's funny. I could sit and do PAs and do things, don't have problems with an airplane, but being up in front of you guys, I really appreciate what the work you do. And, but the, I just wanted to say, this is like a shiny city that everywhere I go, people are like, "You're from South Dakota." They know where I'm from. They knew who our governor is, Kristi Noem. There is so much admiration around the country for her. Even out of the country, people know who Kristi Noem and where South Dakota is. They know where it is on the map. It's amazing. And they're so envious of the freedoms we have. It's just, it's, 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 it's so refreshing, and I'm so proud to say, I'm from South Dakota, and that is my governor. I, I kind of want to echo not the same as what these guys all said, but I, like seeing Tom Rooney here. I don't know what, where you guys all come from, you folks, but I know that, you know, everybody's put in a position for such a time as this, wherever you're put for such a time as this. And I always admired, I was always taught very young in the airlines, you make a mistake, own up to it, go forward from there. Don't, you know, don't hang on to something. If there's something that needs to be changed, let's change it. Let's make it better. We need one state in the country, just one. It's South Dakota. I heard Florida. If you want to, if you want to call out something today, Texas, Governor Abbott abolished the mask today. There is no mask mandate in Texas, and every business counts there. But I wanted to say, for South Dakota, we need one state that'll take a stand. This is the state, we're small, but we're mighty. We're fierce. We're known, not just in the US, but around the world. And it blows my mind when I hear people say, "You're from South Dakota, and you guys are in biggest," I mean, I might be wrong, but I don't think so, "biggest city in South Dakota." You guys have a lot of say in what you do, and we want to be proud of, you know, a city like this. Please, you know, masks.
Thanks, Abby.
Can I just say one more thing?
Your time's up. Thank you. You have a timer in front of you. I got to, there's more people want to speak, so.
Can I just say that I don't?
Abby, thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay. Thank you, though. Appreciate it.
Come on up, sir. Good evening.
Good evening. My name's Adam Bryan. I'm a father, business owner, and I have a STEM degree from Augustana. I want to thank you all for your service to this community. I know the last year hasn't been a great year for, for leadership, a lot of stress. Make this quick. There's a firm scientific foundation for the statement that, that a mask mandate is a feel-good measure. A symptomatic spread has yet to be proven. And, and, and that's, it's just, it's just a big statement right there. It has yet to be proven. And so, so the whole purpose of the masks is for, you know, what, if someone's sick, they should be staying at home. I think we all know that. South Dakota needs leadership willing to choose science over hype, over noise, over pressure, over, over media attention. And so, please let the people decide for themselves. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Adam. Anyone else here to speak on this? Please come forward.
Chair of Research, Sioux Falls. We're going to get into discussion in public and put it down. I keep it minimal. We're worried about our children. Speaker just said. But the city's going to hire people with sex offense charges pending from Eco Aquatic Center.
Is this about masks?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Speak to masks, please.
So if y'all don't, if the mayor, anybody doesn't like what I got to say, you can remove yourself because this is our time, not the mayor's time. So we need to go by what Kristi Noem did, right? Because the mayor might not be here in the next four years. Y'all might not be here in the next two years. So we have to give our props that Kristi Noem did the best that she could do. She brought people here to get jobs, California, Florida, Texas, because the constitutional rights of people. I wish Kristi Noem was here because I admire that woman, because she does not infringe on people's rights. All of these people back here All of these people back here that are against masks, pretend they're wearing a mask, I don't get it. You council members that are against masks don't wear a mask. Again, I'm going to bring up a public input that was on the news, and I was going to go against with, with, with what I'm saying about safety of children, and we got to keep people safe.
All right. Thank you. Do you want to speak, ma'am? Come on up.
Good evening.
Hi, good evening. My name is Chris David. Thanks for having us. Well, it's our choice, but I guess for being here. Couple of things, and people commented on a lot of different things, and like one gentleman said, I believe that, and I hope it's not true, that you've already made your decisions tonight. So I would ask yourself if what I'm saying might internally make you roll your eyes or close your ears, why would that be? If you need to really listen to people and what they have to say, then is it a place of power that you don't want to listen? Or you're like, oh, here they go again, talking about science? So there was a couple of things I thought about when I was out on a forced run today, and the first song, one of the first songs that came into my headphones was a song, "The Breath in My Lungs." And I thought, how fitting. Thank you, God, for the words, because I'm thinking about you guys and what is all going on. And Mayor Paul, I know you're a huge fitness advocate, and if we were in a different city, and I have family all over, Seattle, Minneapolis, Chicago, they say, won't you get arrested if you don't wear a mask? Yet she's carjacked in her driveway. I, it's just crazy. But because they say in that city, that mayor says, no, you have to wear a mask when you're out running. But we're in this city, so this mayor says, oh, you know, we're not, you know, you guys don't have that. So I'm out running, breathing the free air, and I think about these masks. I've seen where they're made, and I've read the studies on these. Do you know the chemicals that are in these? Do you know how they had to change the oil and the properties that are in these? Do you know if you're breathing asbestos? Long time ago, science said that was fine. A long time ago, science said, hey, if somebody's sick, you bleed them. That was science. We're all old enough, I'm looking at ages, not to age ourselves here. Remember the nine planets that science said existed? My mother just made nine pizza pies, right? And we found out differently. So I'd ask yourself to not be so prideful, to look at that and go, you know what? Why are there different things? Science is not consensus, and consensus is not science. So I would ask you to think about that and just consider, there are all different alternatives, and why force this? Mayor Paul, just really quickly, I have 20 seconds. There are so many things that happen, and I appreciate all you've done for our city. Like I said, when you weren't here, tornadoes, everything else. I have 10 seconds. You scoffed when you said, papers, please. Who does that? Dr. Seuss can't no longer speak today, and people are scoffing. It's a slippery slope.
Thanks, Chris. Anyone else here to speak on this topic tonight? Come on up.
Good evening. My name's Steve Johnson. Is the camera working?
Yeah, go ahead and put it on there, Steve. We'll get it queued up for you. There you go.
It's for your safety, it's, or is it about the virus? Is it about control? I have sent emails to all the mask proponents in the city council, have never gotten one back where they would cite their source for the effectiveness of the mask. All I ever hear is the CDC recommends, C R E C, they recommended a lot of things a year ago, made a lot of predictions, none of them which came to fruition. They've skewed the numbers. So here we are again. We'll just change the distance we have to run tonight. In November, it was we'll do it to the end of the year, then it's we'll do it till March, and now it's till April. Because Sanford and Aveira would like you to do this. Can you cite what their deal is? It's good for them, but it's not good for the city of Sioux Falls. It's not good for anybody. I know you said there's a magic number when this vaccine, blah, blah, blah. If you're concerned about the health of the citizens in this town, when are you going to stop the sales of tobacco and alcohol? When are you going to mandate everybody goes to Midco for a swim in the morning? Or they go to Sanford or Aveira to do their laps? That would make an improvement in people's health. You're perpetuating the fear, perpetuating the fear of this virus that is 99-plus percent An apocalyptic event. That's where we were last year. Yes, people have gotten sick, people have died, people that die in car accidents get a Q-tip jammed up their nose so they can see if they died of COVID. People have lost their jobs. Children are losing an education, not just K through 12, but the college kids. People are afraid. Suicides are up. Gee, and it just happens to coincide with all of this COVID stuff. Again, you cite studies for mask effectiveness? You don't, because there are none. I hope that you make the decision not to extend this. I see a lot of people with masks, I don't wear one, and people with masks are aggressive. They chase me around the stores, they tell me to get out of their business, they look at me when they're driving down the street, they've got their mask on in their car by themselves, and they flip me off.
Thanks, Steve. Anyone else here to speak tonight on this topic? All right. Looks like we've heard all the public testimony on this. Council will get a motion on the table, and then we'll move into discussion here. Counselor Kylie, you want to make your motion?
Move to approve.
Second, break.
Second, sale.
Motion by Counselor Kylie, set a date, a second reading for Tuesday, March 9, 2021, seconded by Counselor Sale on that. All right, now we'll move into discussion. Who would like the floor on this item? Go ahead, Counselor Naitzer.
Before I talk about what I was originally going to, I just want to just mention a few things that kind of piqued my interest from public input. As far as the state of emergency goes, I wonder that as well. I'm not entirely sure the state of emergency will be gone by the end of my term, and I have three years left. Frankly, the state of emergency will be over when we decide it's over, when we're done living in fear. Masks are, I, I honor anybody who wants to wear a mask. I'm against making people wear masks because it makes somebody else feel better. Masks are dehumanizing. I'm in a tough position because there's a city ordinance, I'm a city counselor, but I don't want to be sitting here wearing, wearing a mask. You know, as I thought about this, I, I really kind of had a couple of revelations this weekend. The first is, to even consider this, you have to accept the premise that mask mandates work, and that the mandate is the reason that numbers have declined. I don't. There's simply no evidence to show that. There's a lot of wishful thinking. Frankly, I think most of us want it to be true, so we believe it. It's not rational, it's faith, which is fine on a personal level, but you shouldn't make policy based on that. There's no correlation between mask mandates and numbers moving. We, there's countless jurisdictions that have had mask mandates in for months on end, and they've had ebbs and flows. Even throughout those mandates, they had horrific rises in numbers. The numbers have gone up and down, there's variation, something else is driving it. Locally, our numbers were starting to trend down before that we voted on the mask mandate, and they certainly were going down before any effect would have, would have occurred. Even if you can show a correlation, you can't prove causation. Something I've noticed is that we in government at all levels seem to take credit whenever the numbers go down and claim that it's because something that we did, and then when the numbers go up, we tend to lecture you and tell you that you're not doing enough. To even consider this proposal, if we just, let's just, let's just, let's assume, even if you assume that masks are efficacious, and we could argue about that all day, we can play dueling studies until, until the end of time. To even consider this proposal, you have to believe it's appropriate to force people to do something because other people are afraid. That's what this is. We have decided that just because some of us are afraid, we are going to force you by government coercion to do something to make us feel better. That's what this is. They even said it when we voted on this the first time. There was no numbers. The statement was afraid. We're telling people to do because, what to do because we think, we know what's best for them, and we don't think that they can figure out how to take care of themselves. We long ago abandoned any pretense of an objective standard or policy. If you remember way back in the beginning, we were told that we literally could have people dying on the sidewalks in front of the hospital because we were thinking maybe it'd be 5% could be hospitalized, something, something along those lines. We didn't have enough respirators potentially, we didn't have enough hospital beds. But what did everybody in every level of government say? They said, we cannot stop the virus from spreading. Some people are going to die. We don't like it, but that's the way it is. Some are going to die. But we have to protect hospital capacity. Turns out, the numbers weren't quite right. It was more like 1% maybe were hospitalized. We have hospital beds. Did we stop the restrictions? No. The goalposts moved. Then it was something else, and the goalposts moved. Then it was something else, and the goalposts moved. And here we are, and the goalposts are moving again. I, I'd like to have confidence that this would end with this next trigger, but I don't see any reason for confidence. Because this isn't, what we're doing isn't, this isn't rational. It's fear-based. In three days, when the next variant comes out and they say it's not, that this vaccine isn't that effective against it, why, why would we not be right back where we started again? We don't have any objective numbers here. I also find it interesting that apparently there's some magic number that's okay. So I, I don't know what, what number of people dying each week is acceptable to remove the mask mandate, you know, 10, 10 people is okay? I, I, I don't know what that is. I, you know, the, it's really just time to stop this insanity. COVID is real, it's been fatal for many people, it's horrible. But to think that, to think that government can suspend the laws of nature by a city ordinance, it's wishful thinking. You know what precautions to take. This is a lot bigger than COVID or this particular strain. I don't want to be here 10 years from now, walking around in fear. Now, if somebody wants to wear a mask for the rest of their life, I honor that. That's fine. It, I, it doesn't matter. But because some people are fearful, even irrationally fearful, does not mean that we mandate policy. This is a dangerous, slippy, slippery slope, and I don't know how we're going to unring the bell, because there is nothing objective about this. Thank you.
All right. Any other comments tonight on this item?
Mr. Mayor?
Uh, yeah, Counselor Sale.
Yes, I just have a few quick points. You know, I do agree with Counselor Naitzer that, I don't like to wear a mask either. But what we're asking for at this point is to be considerate to your neighbors that are more vulnerable than the general population. It is widely reported, and, and you can look at all the studies, that those people in the vulnerable categories, the lethalness of this disease is higher than the general population. And I think this is just the fact that we are asking the citizens of Sioux Falls, by our ordinance, to respect their neighbors and to help them get through this time until they can receive a vaccine, and then our mandate would go away. So that's what I'm asking for at this point, and I would hope that I could get the rest of the council to at least get us to the second reading. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Counselor Shelberg.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, first, a couple points. I do believe we made the right decision approving the mandate when we did, even though, as I said at the time, it was an incredibly tough call, as I'm about as staunch of a keep government out of my business type as anyone. But I also said approving, you know, a mandate such as this one is something that I might do only once in 100 times, but with the numbers spiking to the point that they had at the time, and we're in the middle of a pandemic, I believe that that had probably qualified as that one in 100 times. So I voted for the mandate, I also supported the last extension, but it was pretty clear at the time in saying it would take a lot for me to sign on to another one after that because, you know, part of my support was based on the timing of this action and making sure there was a clear timeline. So we're dealing with the numbers and the situation at the time we started all of this. So I have to say, it will be difficult for me to go along with a third extension that's moving the timeline, you know, we're, we're moving it again. I do appreciate Counselor Sale and Counselor Kylie's efforts through this, their intentions, as I have from the beginning. I will approve this first reading out of respect for that effort and the opportunity because it is an important topic, it's worthy of more discussion. But I'm struggling a bit on this time for another moving of this. I would just say that mandate or not, I will certainly always encourage citizens to take personal responsibility, to wear masks, to maintain social distance, wash their hands, stay home when they're not feeling well. I mean, we all know the drill well by now. So let's all please stay vigilant, whether your city council's telling you to or not, let's just stay at it. But just had a few, few thoughts to share. I will approve the first reading. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Counselor. Any other discussion on this item here? Counselor Erickson, go ahead.
Thank you. I didn't intend to speak, and I know when I say that, I, when I was in the legislature, I had a seatmate that always said that, and I always said to him, then don't, but here I am speaking, so my apologies. I, I will be brief. You know, I sit here wearing my mask, and it's not, it's not comfortable for me. A lot of don't, a lot of people don't know some of the things in my past that, that wearing a mask for me is a trigger at times, and so I do take a break. It is, it is difficult. I, you know, have my little watch here and see my heart racing from time to time, all because of this. And for someone to tell me that I'm disrespectful because I don't wear my mask, because I need to take that break, and because I need to be mindful of those things that I've experienced in my life, as well as a bunch of other people, whatever that may be for you, I don't want to disregard that. So I, I clearly, you know, I wear my mask, I support the businesses that do require a mask as well. That is their choice for me to enter their business, and I will honor that. I know others, others struggle with that. But for me, I, I will honor that, but I take breaks. Oftentimes, I'll have it under my chin, I carry a water bottle with me for a quick excuse if, if needed. Now, this, this is not, I think where I get the most frustrated with this whole thing is we've had these conversations of, how do we know we're winning? How do we know that we've met that threshold? How do we know that it's time? And that goalpost keeps moving. From day one, it has been not if you get sick, it's when each and every one of you gets sick, we want to make sure you have access to healthcare, and we're protecting that capacity. Hospitals made some really hard decisions. They stopped a lot of elective surgeries. It was really difficult. Then they started saying, oh my gosh, people are not getting immunizations. My kids, I kind of forgot, and I'm like, oh, wait a few months, they're kids, it's okay if I'm a few months off. I got a letter in the mail from the hospital saying, hey, it's time for your, your kiddo's annual immunizations. And so I'm like, oh, well, I'll take them in. I didn't even think, I've never gotten a letter in all my years of parenting, and my oldest is almost 16. And so when will we see some of those effects? It's not just about COVID. It's about delayed healthcare. It's about mental health. When you have high school kids that just need to get out of the, get out of the house and go get ice cream because they can't handle and they can't physically process their mental capabilities with that, I've seen it firsthand. It's a balance. And then when I say it's a balance, I'll get six emails tomorrow saying, how dare you not require masks because you don't care about others and, and you want to kill people, and this is terrible, shame on you. That is not fair, because businesses are hurting. That livelihood and people not seeing That livelihood and people not seeing hope is very, very real. COVID is very, very real. It's very dangerous. It's, it's here. And I hearken back to my first statement. The frustration I have is when you get sick, you need to have healthcare. Our numbers are back to that September. The hospitals can manage it. They're doing a fabulous job caring for many people even outside of Sioux Falls because we have the capacity. We have tons of supplies, tons of supplies and storage that, what will we do with them? The state receives so much, so many supplies that are sitting there right now, which is great. Great that we have that ability if something happens in the future again. But I cannot, I'm going to say it a third time, the goalpost keeps moving. And I find it very frustrating because I just, I don't have faith of what's next. I don't. I don't know that this isn't going to continue to come back again and again and again. I've been consistent in my vote, and I'll say it again, I'm not anti-mask. I support making others feel better and doing my part. Social distancing is, I shop at really early hours, sometimes late at night, I do a lot of online shopping. But I'm social, and in my DNA, I need that social interaction. So my risk is, yeah, I'm social. And I'll support wearing a mask for myself, but I make that choice. And so I will be consistent in my vote and continue voting no with this, because I have firm belief that each and one, each and every one of you can make that decision for yourself. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Counselor. Any, any other comments from anyone here? All right, hearing none, let's take a vote on this, please.
Councilmember Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Knightzert?
No.
All right, that item passes six to two. We'll move on to our next item, please.
Item 42 is a first reading. An ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota repealing ordinance number 3120, authorizing interim revisions to Chapter 57 of the Code of Ordinances of Sioux Falls, South Dakota pertaining to the novel coronavirus, COVID-19. Recommendation, set a date of second reading for Tuesday, March 16, 2021.
Counselor Starr, you gonna?
Yep, I've got it.
Counselor Starr, you going to speak to this?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just briefly, we took one run at this, this summer, but basically what we want to do is repeal the emergency when it comes to garbage or sanitation collection within the city. What we did at the beginning of the pandemic was say that it would be a health risk for the community if garbage haulers weren't able to pick up trash within our city because their employees had gotten sick, or there would be some kind of shortage, and that this would save a considerable amount of time. In fact, I think one of the quotes were about 40% labor cost by taking our garbage cans to the street. And it's just at the point now where it needs to be repealed. There are a lot of people who are unable, we're starting to hear from folks that are elderly, disabled, or they travel. And in my neighborhood, what I see is a lot of people that take it out the night before and it blows, or it's gone through by wildlife, because I live on the edge of the city, whether the deer come, or we have a possum we're still trying to track down with Dr. DeYoung. So it belongs at the, at the house, just like we've always done in this community, and it's time to move it forward. I respect what Public Works is, is trying to do in a bigger picture, and I know Director Cotter's here tonight and probably won't look at it the same way I do, but that's part of the spirited discussion we have here. And we just spent a couple hours doing that, we'll do a couple minutes more. So that's basically it. We're repealing the curbside, the requirement for citizens to move their garbage cans to the, and recycling to the curb.
All right, thank you, Counselor.
Thank you.
Anyone from the public would like to speak on this item tonight? All right, let's get a motion on the floor, and then we can move into discussion here.
Move to set a date of second reading to Tuesday, March 16.
Second.
All right, motion by Starr, seconded by Jensen on this item. Discussion amongst the council on this one? Counselor Jensen, go ahead.
Yeah, I'll be real brief. So getting with Counselor Starr and Director Cotter, the reason we're moving it to March 16 is so that we can have the thorough conversation with our haulers in town, and we can, you know, see how their numbers have been impacted by what we've done over the past, you know, emergency clause on that. So it'll be really healthy to debate that and talk about, you know, is this a good thing or a bad thing? But we need to see the data from our haulers to make certain that it is one of those things. And I think doing that from a place of the old status quo is a good place to have that debate and start that debate. So I'd appreciate you guys moving this forward and having that conversation. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Counselor. Any other discussion on the council on this item? Counselor Erickson, go ahead.
Thank you, Counselor Starr and Jensen for bringing this forward. I know I kind of had each of your ear, as well as I've had some constituents reaching out frustrated with just being charged extra because of the concierge service. And I'm a traveler, my kids play competitive sports, and I'm gone a lot of Fridays, and missing my garbage service is a big deal, and it is to a lot of other people, because I can't have it sitting there at the curb for several days. I, I know each of us have probably heard from a handful of folks. I don't, I am not personally, just speaking a little bit further, I'm not personally opposed if a garbage hauler wants, and, and the person agrees to that, to have it there, that's great, that's fine. I try to help out my garbage hauler as much as possible, but for when you're penalized and charged more because you didn't have it there is where I have a problem with it. And that was certainly happening with a couple of haulers. And so I'm excited to kind of kick this back and start over and see what changes need to be had within this utility. So thank you both for bringing this.
All right, thank you, Counselor. All right, last call for any other discussion on this item, council? All right, hearing none, let's take a vote on this, please.
Councilmember Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Knightzert?
Yes.
That passes eight to zero. Next item, please.
Item 47 is a resolution advising and giving consent to the appointment of members to certain citizen boards, those being Lee Jensen and Moses Pesima for Falls Community Health Center governing board.
All right. Lee or Moses, any, either of those folks here tonight? All right. Just need a motion to approve Lee and Moses to our Falls Community Health Board, please.
Move to approve Erickson.
Second, Jensen.
All right, motion by Erickson, seconded by Jensen on that item. Any discussion there? All right, let's vote on these two folks, please.
Councilmember Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Knightzert?
Yes.
All right, that passes eight to zero. Next item?
Next item is 48, notice of transfer of appropriations on the memorandum dated December 31, 2020.
All right, council, you got any new business we got to bring up tonight? All right, seeing none, we'll move to general public input portion of our agenda. And as a reminder, your input during this portion will last no more than three minutes per person, so at this time, I'd like to invite anyone forward for general public input.
Sierra, Bruce, out of Sioux Falls. I'm going to talk a little bit about what happened with the city employment call, and then I'll stop because I don't think the public needs to know in details. We need internal policy, they need to change their policy on how they hire people within the city. And I'm going to leave it like that. If we have any victims that come forward, which we don't know that there will be victims yet or not, it's going to cost the city millions on the taxpayers' money. Things that are going on behind the scenes, need to stay behind the scenes. I'm not going to get into why he got hired, protocols, and blase, blase. But I will let the public know that they need to call City Hall and get internally processing of the hiring of employees better than what they're doing internally. I'm going to speak on behalf of the police department. Here we go again with the police. We have five K-9 officers. The K-9 officer, and don't believe upper management, and don't believe Chief Burns, because it's coming from the K-9 officer. I called Des Moines, Iowa. Des Moines, Iowa has eight, plus two bombs with the airport. They cannot keep up on five. And I'm going to tell you, I'm serious. The police cannot come here and speak, upper management ignores them, and a union is not good for nothing. We need more, we need more in this budget. We need two K-9 units every shift. This is what the police is asking for. It's not a want, it's a need. So if we can fit a next budget and go against upper management and whoever else and get those policemen, those two, or even one, that's, that's great. It's only nine to 10,000, and it's up to what, 12 or 15 weeks of training? It's not much. It's not, we're not talking about millions. When a K-9 officer is going to tell me, Sierra, it's growing rapid. I'm not going to say the certain days, but three days this week, we didn't even have a K-9 unit on that road. And tell me, upper management, I'm lying. Three days, three nights, none. Des Moines, Iowa is a sister state, and they got eight. We need to listen to our police officers. I'm going to go against the mayor, and I'm going to go against his chief of policemen, and I'm going to ask council to make it happen and put it in the budget for next year.
All right, thank you. Anyone else here for general public input tonight? All right, not seeing anyone, I'd need a motion adjourned, please.
So move Jensen.
All right, motion by Jensen, seconded by Erickson. Let's take a roll call vote on that, please.
Councilmember Selberg?
Yes. Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Knightzert?
Yes.
All right, that passes eight to zero. We are adjourned. Have a good night, everyone.
Good.